Okay. We're up and ready. I'd like to call this order, the Order of Supervised Meeting, October 13th, 2016. At this time, Mr. Slade would do our invocation. I appreciate it.
Father, we're just so grateful again. They have come before you before we start this meeting. Lord, we look forward to what's going to be accomplished today with expectation. And thank you, Lord, for these gentlemen, for your giving them the wisdom and the discernment they need to make good decisions. Father, we are so grateful for the opportunity to participate in our government. Father, it's a privilege, and we don't want to take it for granted. We thank you for that blessing. Father, I pray that as we consider the work we're counting today, we'll be mindful of the responsibility that we have to think more highly of others than we do of ourselves. Father, I pray that the first responders that make sure that we can enjoy the freedoms we have, Father, I pray that you would bless them and protect them and bring them home safely in Christ's name. Amen.
If you don't mind, I mentioned, make sure your phones are on silent. We won't have an embarrassing moment. Next, we have public comment recognition. We're going to skip one. Phil Fisher-Plinton was unable to attend today. But we do have, we need Brett Ishy. Brett, you here? Yeah, there you are. Come forth. He's got something to talk about.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Over the last two or three months, you know, we've got, had little to no rainfall, and the trend looking like we're not going to have any rainfall for the next, you know, at least 30, 35 days. So I want to see if y'all will be willing to go under a burn ban for Rankin County, going effective today and running for the next 30 days.
What's the rest of the, are we the only county, or the?
There's other counties around that are doing the same thing today. Talked to Heinz County this morning, they're looking at going under one also.
It's not something the state's doing, though?
That's right.
Okay.
So is the forestry commission not doing this anymore?
The forestry commission does do it, but it's up to us to bring it to y'all to get it voted on, and then we take it to them. I called our district forester this morning, and the conversation we had is he does advise for us to go ahead and go under a burn ban. When I talked to him this morning, he said, you know, I actually figured, you know, y'all would have already gone under one with the amount of brush fires and stuff that we've had.
Okay.
All right.
Well, under the recommendation of the forest commission mainly, really, I guess we would base this.
I make a motion to add this item to the agenda.
Second.
Motion to add this item to the agenda, a burn ban by Mr. Bishop, second Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'd have a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to declare a burn ban in Rankin County.
Motion for Mr. Bishop, second Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right. Thank you.
We put that 30 days, right? That what you said?
Yes, it will be 30 days.
30 days.
Unless we start getting rain or something, yeah.
Well, you failed.
Yeah. No way I can get under here.
Okay. All business. A motion approved.
Sir.
Motion approved. I have a motion.
Sir, may I say?
No, I'm sorry. Most approve, Mr. Mara, second Mr. Cross, excuse me, Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Consent agenda. Before we prove it, I got something we need to add to the consent agenda. It's a personnel recommendation of Ms. Judy Fortenberry.
Most to add that item to the agenda, consent?
All right. Most to add this item to the agenda by Mr. Bishop, second Mr. Gaines. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Most approve consent agenda.
Now, I have a motion. Most approved consent agenda, most approved by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next, we have Ms. Fortenberry.
Good morning. We have a tax sale that we need you to void and refund the tax sale purchaser. PIN number 39015. Oh, I'm sorry. PIN number 36250 and 39015.
Second.
Most approve, Mr. Cross, second Mr. Bishop. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Request approval to attend the Make-A-Fall Conference and start from October 18th, 19th, and pay any travel-related expenses.
Second.
Most approve, Mr. Cross.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have our road manager, Mike Harrison.
Good morning.
Morning.
Road work accomplishing for September.
I make a motion to approve work accomplishing schedule.
Most approve, Mr. Bishop, second Mr. Mara. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Road work scheduled for October.
Sir.
Most approve, Mr. Mara.
Jay got both of them.
Yeah, Jay got both of them.
Jay got both of them.
All right. C.
Request approval for center point permit on construction of natural gas main land along Mount Hame installed between old Highway 471 and Billitt Road.
Okay.
Second.
Most approve, Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Mr. Slade, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's like we've got some public hearings to set. The first four items, Mr. President, are all being set for November the 7th at 9:00 a.m. So the public hearings for country Meadows rezoning request, the country Meadows dimensional variance request, the Angel and McCallum conditional use, and the Bruce Dupree conditional use permit, those will be set November 7th, 9:00 a.m.
Do I have a motion to set these public hearings?
Sir.
Second.
Most by Mr. Mara, second Mr. Gaines. Set these public hearings. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Next item, item E, is a public hearing on the I-55 Development LLC conditional use permit. We'll open that public hearing. I-55 Development LLC is seeking a conditional use permit to construct a 4,135 square foot convenience store on Old Flannan Road. They are carving out, very good, thank you, a .689 acre parcel out of a 12 acre tract that's north of the Pots and Moore Pottery on Old Flannan Road. The property is already zoned, I'm sorry, the property is zoned C2. The contractor said the entire building will have a brick facade. That public hearing is open. I'll ask, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the I-55 Development LLC conditional use permit? Anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition to that matter. We'll close that public hearing and be appropriate to take action.
I motion to approve this.
Sir. Is this the country Meadows?
No, sir. I-55 Development.
This is the C-5.
All right.
I second.
Most approved, tomorrow, second Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. Next item is the public hearing on the PMG Properties LLC dimensional variance request, 3017 Highway 80, District 4. We'll open that public hearing. PMG Properties LLC is proposing construction of a storage office unit, 3017 Highway 80. The site plan shows six phases, but they are currently planning to construct only Phase 1, six units, 1,000 square feet each. The property is 3.17 acres, zoned I-2. It's at the corner, it's a corner lot with frontage on both Highway 80 and the entrance drive called East Office Brandon Park. I-2 requires a 50-foot front setback, and the front setback has to apply to both streets, both Highway 80 and East Brandon Office Park Drive, because that is a corner lot. And they meet the front setback on Highway 80, but they are requesting a 35-foot variance from the front setback on that entrance drive. This time, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the PMG Properties LLC dimensional variance request. Is anyone here to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I see no one here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. This time, be appropriate, take action.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Most approve, Mr. Gaines, second Mr. Mara. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Next item is a public hearing on the Terra Road rezoning request, District 3. This is initiated by Rankin County. It's a 100-acre tract of land on Terra Road, currently zoned RE1A, seeking to be rezoned to RE1. RE1A is considered a transitional area. Development of subdivisions within RE1A is not allowed under our zoning ordinance. Previous property owner divided out seven lots from 2004 to the present without any knowledge of Rankin County. Four of the seven lots now have homes constructed on them. The owners of the three remaining lots are seeking building permits. The owner wants to sell the remaining 72.54 acres to a potential buyer for large lot residential development. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on the rezoning request. Gentlemen, this is a Rankin County action that is coming forward. The basis for the rezoning is the change, the material change, and the circumstances of the area. This area of Terra Road is becoming more residential, and lot development is coming online. It is a transitional area. That is, it's always been understood that it's moving from a more rural setting to a less rural setting. It is within about a mile of the existing, I think it's about a mile of the existing city of Brandon corporate limits, unless I'm, am I far off? Right about that, within a mile or so, not very far. So it's within shouting distance of the city as it stands. So the basis of the rezoning would be the material change and the circumstances of the area there. We believe there's clear and convincing evidence of those material changes. So that would be the basis for the request. At this time, I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Rankin County request to rezone this 100-acre tract of property from RE1A to RE1. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? If you'll come forward, state your name and address, please. If you have any documents to present, you'll need to demonstrate.
Yes, my name is Charles Framan. I live at 652 Terra Road, right across from where this is, wanting to be rezoned. And my problem with it, I know they want big lots. My house has done flooded twice in four years. Rankin County come in, riprap my ditch. It looks worse now than it did when they first started. It won't come, nobody will come in and clean my ditch. I've got trees bigger in it now than was in it five years ago. And I donated my land for them to do it. And with this development here, is that going to push the water back on me more? Because they going to change the flow of the water? So that's what I have a problem with. I'm tired of flooding.
Is that something that we, who's looked at the drainage part of it?
That's going to fall, really, to Mr. Buster, to the road manager.
Okay.
To make that determination. We're familiar with the area and some of the challenges that we have through there with that property, high drains. That would be something Mr. Buster would have to look at.
One thing to clarify, there is no set development going in there at this time. At the time, somebody wants to take and construct additional lots out there, we will look at where the water's going and where it's headed, because you're right, the last thing we want to do is make it any worse than what you folks already have out there to begin with. This is just a house cleaning issue that we need to clarify for the existing lot owners out there. So if they ever decide to sell their house down the road, there's not an issue for the proper zoning that is in place to allow them to maneuver through the financing and selling of a home down the road. But no additional houses will be built in that development until certain things are done, road one being one, drainage being addressed as two. So this is just kind of a house cleaning for the existing lot owners out there, is what we're trying to accomplish. Now, your particular tract, is it the riprap ditch that we're working on getting that kind of line down over now, Mr. Harrison? So that is on the list to try to get done this fall before the winter hits, is to get in there and spray or solve that issue.
Yep. You're going to have to have something in there.
Hold on just a second, may I? Just to clarify one issue, the ditch that is being referenced here, in light of the fact that we continually have discussion about ditches around here.
Right.
I wanted to clarify that this particular ditch is connected to an old federal project. Federal funds were used to deal with some of the erosion issues along this ditch. We know it as the Terra Road Ditch, for purposes of our maintenance of federal projects. We have a correspond, we, the county has a corresponding maintenance responsibility with respect to this ditch. It is rip-wrapped, as you heard, and so we have, I just want to clarify, on the record, Rankin County has both the responsibility and the right to access that ditch. It is not considered, it is still private property, but it is a part of our maintenance responsibility that we have obligated ourselves to with the federal government.
Okay.
So that's how we can deal with that particular ditch. I didn't want any other individuals to be running in here asking about their ditch, because it may not be the same analysis.
Right.
Okay, so there's that. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? Do you want to speak? Okay. Come forward, please, and give your name and address.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Jan White, and I live at 621 Terra Road. My question is, I mean, we all know development's coming. I see a lot of my neighbors here and the man that bought the land, and we know the development's coming, we just want to make sure it's done right, and it's done with us in mind also, because we've been there for years. And if it does get rezoned, which, you know, probably will, will we have a say in the developer that comes in and what he wants to do with the land? I mean, what if he wants to put in mobile homes? What if he wants to put in one acre lots? That's what's got us riled up, okay?
Let me go ahead and address that. Again, it's beyond the purview or the scope of what we're doing here today, but I think it probably would be helpful if everyone who's here and has an interest in it hears some more details about the rezoning. We are, first and foremost, RE1A is the current zoning of the property, RE1A. The minimum lot size for development, not subdivision development, but development within RE1A is one acre. The minimum lot size for development, which may include subdivisions in RE1, is one acre. So to put everybody's mind at ease about going from RE1 to, I'm sorry, RE1A to RE1, you are still at a minimum acreage of one acre per lot. Does that help everybody? One acre per lot. Okay, so there won't be small lot development here until such time as there is adequate sewer and water. And I'm not aware of any plan at this point to bring sewer out there. And so there is not a way for development to be less than one acre at the present time.
But if the developer does come in, will we have a say as to what he wants to do to that property?
It depends on whether or not what he wants to do with that property, requires some sort of additional public hearing as it relates to a change in either the zoning ordinance or under the subdivision ordinance itself. There's potential, but for the most part, we have ordinances in place that address how development happens within the context of RE1 zoning. All right, so you can look at the subdivision ordinance and make your own determination about what the potential development would be. So we feel like we got pretty good control on that. So I apologize, turn them back to you guys, but that's.
You need to be telling them.
Yeah, it's, I think where we are, and for, to close the loop on it, this property is not, would not be zoned either now or if you decide to zone it to RE1. It would not be zoned properly for mobile home development. Okay, so we can just go ahead and put that to bed right now. All right, does anyone else have anything they wish to say to the board on this matter? Jason?
My name's Jason Womack, and I'm under contract to purchase this property. It's roughly 70 acres is what I'm under contract to purchase, but I just want to make sure everyone knows that I didn't bring this action to rezonate. This was nothing that I brought about. I bought the property as it was and intended to continue to sell it like it had been being sold. The residents that live out there understand that it's a private road, and the people, the two that I've spoken with, understood that and wanted to keep it that way. That's the way they wanted it. I don't know if anyone else wants to say that or not, but there's three other lot owners that have purchased out there as well, and they wanted it to remain that way. I don't, I personally did not bring this zoning request. I don't know if any individual is trying to rezonate this, or if it's just simply a county action that's being done.
Yeah, I think we don't have much choice at this point.
Okay. But I'm just letting you know that it wasn't me that brought this action.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're cleaning up the issue of the fact that we have what appears to be a subdivision that we didn't know about. We're getting it zoned correctly so that we can avoid some later issues that would jump up and bite some folks who didn't have an awareness. There is a set of restrictive covenants that already apply to this piece of property that the original owner executed in favor of Rankin County. Those restrictive covenants have, you can believe it, restrictions on the use of the property, which also require, for the purposes of this particular area of development, the lots have to be a minimum of three acres, not just one. The restrictive covenant says no smaller than a three-acre lot can be developed out there. So this is a low-density development that is being planned, and that's what I would anticipate going forward, once, if the board decides to rezonate. If the board finds that there's clear and convincing evidence for the need to rezonate, then at that point, there will be other steps that have to take place before the development can actually come online. There are three lots out there that are currently prepared for construction and/or sale, and unless and until this gets dealt with, those folks are stuck.
But they got the large lots?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Baker back there represents the, I want a current owner, I think.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Craig, for outlining that. It's cleanup measure with regard to this development. Currently, we need to get it rezoned for whatever happens out there, and this rezoning seems to be the most appropriate for subdivision development. I would simply ask that in the process of your action, that you clarify that the three lots that have been previously conveyed, the lots that are, I call it the Bounds Lot, Rodney Bounds, Christopher Sullivan and Brooke Sullivan, and Christopher Kirkendall and Lacy Kirkendall, all over three acre lots, all of which were conveyed several years back, all of which are subject to the amended covenants that are in place, that as part of the rezoning action, that there be some acknowledgement by the board that those lots are available for development in accordance with, in other words, there's no more comebacks on that as long as they meet the amended covenants that are in place now. So we can get those lots kind of back in, back in the market, so to speak. With regard to the balance of the property, there have been some discussions, and we'll have to come back with a plan with regard to that development. Obviously, at this point, it has to be three acres, because you've got covenants in place for that. Unless you change that, that won't change, zoning or not. There are covenants in place, just like if you moved into a subdivision, and you add, this board controls the key on that. So that won't change. And so you can expect a three-acre development with all of the disclaimers that exist within your amended covenants. Don't expect a school bus to go down there. Don't expect a fire truck to go down there. Don't expect a trash truck to go down there. These are private roads. You'll be responsible for grading and keeping them up, watering sewers on youth to connect to the company that may provide that. And so those caveats, so to speak, appear in the later deeds, and that postdate this, those caveats appear in there. And so those that are buying into it understand what they're stepping into, what's going on. And so we're asking to clean this up from a zoning standpoint this morning and release these three lots, as we discussed. We'll come back later with an overall plan with regard to the development of the balance.
What about the road, though, that's in there? Is it built to county standard?
That's why we've got the covenants in place here. It's already a private road, subject to private maintenance.
Currently.
But the ones we've been doing, maybe because it's grandfathered, but the ones that we've been doing now are still being built to county standard.
This is all factors, and it's because we found out about the development after the fact.
Somebody went out and sold property without going through our subdivision ordinance.
That's correct.
Well, it happens, but in this particular instance, you have knowing owners and knowing sellers, and the conditions that exist out there and how they're going to exist in the future are acceptable to the parties, arms-length transaction. Future maintenance of those roads will be subject to the owners out there, working out maintenance agreements amongst themselves. At the time that the overall development is approved, I would anticipate that you'll have a widened road, 24, 26 feet. You'll have sufficient to support a fully laden fire truck to get back there.
Yeah.
You will have a way to, I don't know if you know, but there are two roads that actually go in. Both of those will be cul-de-sacs sufficiently for the radius for turning of a big vehicle. And ultimately, there'll be some form of connector between the two cul-de-sacs, not a full-on road, but at least something that you'll see a bed of some sort that you can connect those in emergency.
And handle emergency vehicles.
So the basics will be accommodated for the type of development that exists. But now, we'd ask that the rezoning occur and that there be some action to indicate that those three lots are released for whatever magic words Craig thinks needs to be done there. And then we'll come back with the base with Mr. Womack and the current owner and the bank and everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So where we are, the magic words that Mark was referring to, where we are presently, is that our Office of Community Development is not releasing building permits for the three lots that are already purchased and are hung up, so to speak. So I think what we would want to is simply to acknowledge that those three lots are in play and that the Office of Community Development is authorized to release those lots for construction permits insofar as they meet all of the other requirements that are related to construction.
Okay. I make that motion.
All right, let me close that public hearing really quick. So anybody else has anything to say? We'll close that public hearing.
I make that motion.
Motion to approve this is by Mr. Mara.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop. Any more discussion?
You know, we're doing this just to assist those three owners or four owners that went out and bought this property and now aren't able to build a house.
Any future development has to come back before us.
Well, not just, I'm just concerned about the road issue, and I think Mark addressed that, because emergency use vehicles, you get that, more people, more people in there subject to that.
Right.
Okay. Any more discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Gentlemen, the next item, item H, is a simple correction of our prior amendments from September 6th. We had, and this was my fault, I had the wrong address for the property that we were looking at in Fox Place subdivision. I had it listed as 306 Lacoste Court. It's actually 305 Lacoste Court. This is just simply to clarify that we were, that we took action with respect to 305 Lacoste Court.
Yep. Second.
Most of them, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Mara. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Gentlemen, the next item, item I, I notice Mr. Durst here, this is to conduct our public hearing on a petition to adopt a resolution of the board determining the necessity for invoking our authority under both the municipal and county statutes to adopt a tax increment financing plan. You have already indicated an intent to do so by virtue of the fact that you authorized the publication of a notice for the hearing today. That notice, by the way, has been reduced to a proof of publication that is already in our possession. And so at this time, we will open the public hearing on the Crossgates Crossing Development Project and Proposed TIF Plan. I'll ask if there is anyone here. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Cross Gates Crossing TIF Plan pursuant to 4521 of the Mississippi Code. Anyone speak in opposition? Juris? You got anything you want to say in favor of, or shall we just have to close that public hearing? I'm sure we'll object, but in all seriousness, I appreciate the board's consideration of it. Are there any questions that you'd like to address or comments about the project? We're happy to make some.
Close the public hearing.
Yes, sir. That public hearing is now closed. This time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Gaines. Any more discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Good job, Chris.
Yeah, you sold me.
Ms. Oster?
Ms. Oster, yes.
Thank you. The first item I have this morning is approval of the resolution to adopt the Rankin County Hazard Mitigation Plan update for 2016 through 2021, as approved by MEMA and FEMA. And Bob Wedgeworth is here. If y'all have any questions on that.
Sub move.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you. The next item is authority to pay Fayros Consulting Service for the voting machine, RFP provided by Madalum Lennep, and in the amount of $3,0975, an authority to issue that check. This is the first payment that we're gonna make to him.
Most approved, Mr. Morrow, second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
The next item is authority to execute the certificate of completion and final acceptance of project number MS-12I106B, and that is the Miss Winn project. And Bob is here, if y'all have any questions about that. I do know that releasing this final acceptance now, we'll start the clock running on our maintenance portion of it.
Yeah, I, I just want to hear from Bob, just for two seconds, just to hear out of your mouth, that you got it where you want it and.
The installation is done. This, this portion completes the installation of the project.
Is the installation correct and?
Installation is correct. We still have several issues that we're working out. One is the GPS with, we've got a few remaining patrol cars that we've got to get in there and finish up on the GPS. We're also retuning a number of, we're rotating them in now. We've got several fire departments that have been complete, but we're retuning and readjusting every volunteer fire department's radio. Every radio's on that department, so.
Well, Bob, if we're not finished, why do we want to sign off on it?
The installation's done, so that part of the project's, what they're saying is done. I mean, the work still continues, and they're, they're picking up the tab for that, but as far as the actual installation.
The hardware, they won't start it.
Yeah, the hardware is all in. All they're doing now is basically fine tuning everything on the actual, on the user radio. The system is complete. Sheriff, you feel confident in that, too? Okay. All right.
Okay. Motion approved.
Sub move.
First, Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cross. Any more discussion? All favors, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Additional business? We have none. Executive session?
Oh, man, of course.
You can believe it.
Man, I was on record time.
We're not done yet. We're not done yet. We can still beat Bishop's best time.
And you're going comfortably beat it.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're blaming all that on me, I guess, huh?
Yeah, absolutely.
We've got an update on some litigation matters. The Associate Counsel is on the way, so if we could take just a short break, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. I make a motion to take a recess for 10 minutes? Is that what you need?
Recession.